With the roll call.
Eric Alderetti.
Here.
Bill Sarah.
Present.
Here.
James Carter.
Here.
Sean Mill.
Here.
Barton Falcone.
Here.
Lynn Emery.
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this Planning Commission meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, and that Commissioner Alderetti will be participating in this Planning Commission meeting by speakerphone. In accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. Please bear with me while I briefly go through some special procedures required by the Brown Act. I would now like to request that Commissioner Alderetti respond to the following questions. Commissioner Alderetti, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now? Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Is the agenda posted at the location where you are at?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so? Yea or nay? Boss Eric?
Eric?
Yes.
Did you hear my one item there? Is your location...
I didn't hear that one.
Okay, is your location reasonably accessible to the public?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
There is none.
Okay. I would now like to ask that any member of the Planning Commission speak up at this time if such commissioner has not been able to clearly hear Commissioner Alderetti. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all commissioners present have indicated that they were able to hear Commissioner Alderetti clearly. I would next request that any commissioner, including Commissioner Alderetti, speak up at this time if such commissioner has any reason to believe, based on voice recognition or otherwise, that the person representing himself to be Commissioner Alderetti is not truly so. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that no commissioner has expressed doubt that Commissioner Alderetti is participating by teleconference along with Planning Commissioners present here. I would now like to advise the Planning Commission and the Secretary that any votes taken during teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. And so we've already done, we've done the roll call. Unless we do it again. We don't need to do it again, correct? Okay. Well, this is a portion for public comments. Does any, does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? If so, you may fill out a request to speak form with the Secretary, and after introduction, have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the Chairman. So the first item of business is consent calendar. Yes.
Presentation.
Ah, yes, we do have presentation, thank you. Presentation of the Police Department, Commander Ken Minsky. See why we were waiting for you, Ken?
Okay. I'm still waiting to find out what exactly happened.
I'm sure you'll be the second person to know.
Probably about the age. Now, I can come here and give you a presentation and be a talking head, or it was my understanding that you guys had quite a few questions that you were looking for clarification on, and so it's my job today to try to make sure that you have no more questions after we're done today. Is that, are we on the same page, or did I get something screwed up?
Well, Commander, we had a couple ABC license items come up. One was a couple months ago, I think. And so there was some question on the crime in the area, and I think that the idea was how that crime is tabulated, et cetera. I didn't personally particularly have any questions, but I think Commissioner Mill may, and so...
We'll start with that, we'll start with that incident. I want to go back a couple months. There was a liquor license that was proposed, our CUP was proposed for a restaurant on Fifth Street just east of Harbor, and it falls within the Santa Anita, the Santa Anita gang injunction area. The department, the police recommendation was that the crime is below what we would consider be a problem. And I think that a few of us couldn't understand how we can go to the courts and get an injunction saying that crime is so bad in this area, we need an injunction against us, but then we could come here. And I was just thinking that, well, what about the lawyers for these, for these folks in this area? Couldn't they come and say, well, they're saying crime isn't bad according to this report, but then we go to the court? So could you kind of explain how we would look at it from...
So, everybody has a map we've just given you. And if you were to look at grid 65 over on the far west end, that's probably the area we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Fifth, just east of Harbor. So in grid 65, we go over here to the paperwork that you guys just received. No, they do, I just gave you the paperwork. And you look at the policing grid, which is the second column over, and then we can just scroll down until we hit 65. You'll see 66 is ranked 24, 67 is ranked 25, 65 is ranked 27. What we're talking about here is the amount of incidents that occurred. It's the total volume of incidents that occur in a geographic policing grid. Now, somebody else I heard had asked, how did these grids come about? I would absolutely love to tell you I know that answer. However, they've been here for the 30 years that I've been here, and when I asked my dad, who was here 28 years before me, he said they were here when he was here. We do and have moved around the geographic policing districts. So we have northeast, we have southeast, we have south coast, we have, we have the west end. And over time, we have moved them. But the geographic policing grids have not changed in at least 30 years that I'm positive of. And the one main reason that we don't change those policing grids is so that we can not only look for ABC licenses, which is kind of on the back burner, but we keep these crime, the information pertaining to the specific areas, we can stay consistent. And we know that grid 186, which is here and here, it's consistently very high in activity. We can tell you that grid 165 is very, very high in activity. It's always high in activity, and these are the reasons why. But the policing grids, they never change. They're always consistent. So when you look back and you say, why is for a gang injunction, how is it that crime can't be quite as bad there, and we're saying it's not so horrible? When you go to the court and you talk about gang injunctions, you're talking about a lot of specific types of crime. You're talking about a lot of specific gang types of crime. You're talking about violent assaults, you're talking about a lot of street robberies, you're talking about gang activity involving intimidation of street vendors, and you can go and prove certain types of activity in these areas and attribute a majority of the activity to the gangs. And then when we look at our stats, and then we go to the District Attorney's Office and we work with them, the District Attorney's Office is actually the entity that decides where they want to do injunctions, and we facilitate that process. What else can I answer for you about that? I know it's not the whole answer that you're looking for, but it's, it's a conglomeration of a whole bunch of activity that goes on there. What you guys see, when we look at police incidents, we're talking about every single type of call for service that we get. Overall police activity.
Okay.
Sir?
So when, like you say, rank number one or grid 165, does that mean it's like the most incidents in town?
Okay, so let's look, let's find grid 165.
Civic Center.
165.
Right, right, I see where it is.
Right? So we're talking about the area directly north of First Street and the direct, the area directly east of Flower.
Yep.
Why do we think grid 165 is the highest reporting area that we have?
The homeless in this, in this civic center.
Homeless, crimes of public disorder.
Lot of politicians.
Wasn't me, I didn't say that. So generally, what you'll find, again, and something for you to take into consideration is, we have 1,707 incidents that occurred within that policing grid. We don't, we don't separate what is officer-initiated activity or what is activity that was called into us. It's a lump sum. So in the Civic Center, perfect example, we have six officers that are permanently assigned to do nothing but work in the Civic Center. I would expect that to be one of the highest policing grids in the city, otherwise the county isn't getting its money's worth.
Thank you.
Okay.
That makes sense.
And if you look at grid, if you look at the number two rank, grid 186 is predominantly one of our busiest areas overall. For years and years and years, it has been. Why? Because it is most, it is one of the most densely populated grids in the city. And crime, of course, does coincide with population density. What do you got, boss?
Let me, let me jump in on this. So one of the issues, I've heard myself and some of my colleagues talk about when we receive the reports, the staff reports for the CUPs. The CUP by nature being a discretionary action, so we're up here deliberating, trying to say, okay, well, number one, should we approve this use? And if we do, perhaps maybe there's a condition or two that should be on there or not be on there. And I think that when we see the stats that are in the staff report, they're of a certain level, you know, as you're saying, all incidences, from the smallest things to the biggest things. So if we're looking at, you know, for instance, the example that Commissioner Mill brought up with the restaurant on Fifth Street, I don't think we're really, I don't want to say we're not concerned, but it just doesn't apply as much when we're talking about vendors being shaken down or, you know, jaywalking, you know, unless it's a drunk guy jaywalking at 2:00 AM or something. So, but with that being said, I think, at least for me, I'll just say for myself, I would love to see when we do these, some sort of, I guess, kind of, like a specifics as far as, you know, for instance, if there was any incidences that would make sense for the commission to know. So for instance, if we know that the parking lot in the back, there was, you know, there's been a couple of fights, I think it would be in your guys' best interest to let us know that so we could say, in case it hasn't been brought up yet by staff, which 99% of the time would be, but if it wasn't, one of us could say, well, you know, maybe we can use some lighting in the back. We'd like to condition it to have some additional lighting. And I think that if we know what kinds of incidences, not just simply it's ranked, you know, fourth out of 100 and something grids, but rather, oh, by the way, here's just a couple of juicy ones that have happened here at site. Because some of the incidences, for instance, if a car crash happens at Fourth and Main, I'm not going to blame Starbucks for it, I'm pretty sure it was just two trucks, two cars that hit each other. Probably not Starbucks, probably not Teresa's Jewelers, it's just, it's an incident. But if someone calls you guys in, what do they do? They say, well, I'm from Starbucks. I mean, and it's a call for service to Starbucks.
Right.
So I guess my concern is just simply having some specifics, not every single thing. I'm not asking for like, of a, you know, thousand incidences give us every single one, but again, just from your guys' good judgment to help us understand, if we were to move forward with an approval, what kind of conditions would be best suited for the site, or at least for us to be most aware of.
So, I'll ask back a couple of questions, and then I think I can talk about some of the complexities involved.
Okay.
When you talk about how many, or talk about incidents that you guys should know about, how far back do you think that I should go?
That's a good question.
And let's assume that I look at five years.
Okay.
Let's just take that. So if I was to take five years, then I look at, even in grid 65, right? 444, five years, I'm looking at 2,000, over 2,000 calls for service in that five years. That becomes incredibly difficult for me. But part of your point about Starbucks really falls into what I believe law enforcement's biggest hurdle is when we talk about ABC licenses. Starbucks was a perfect example. The guy got into a car crash in front of Starbucks if by some freak chance he got his Super Grande Latte Frappuccino thing and it was too hot, and he was, he left the parking lot and it was too hot and he spilt it in his lap, and that's what he, that's what, he crashed.
Right.
If the cop says, where were you at? Where did you get your Starbucks from? Was it here? Should we attribute it to the Starbucks as the reason why? Should we try to hold them accountable to say, you really ought to tell your people not to drink and drive with hot coffee, right? Whether my officer asked that question or not, I'd like to think that they will, but I'm not sure. When we talk about a lot of incidents, and it's what makes alcohol establishment so incredibly difficult for us, how do I attribute activity that occurs in and around a location to the location? We talked about a guy who's walking home at night who's drunk. If the guy left bar A and walked down the street six blocks and then got hit by another drunk driver, is it the bar's fault that they over-served the guy? I don't know. If the guy's walking home and then he passes out and hits his head, do we attribute it to the bar? If the guy's not drunk, went over, had a drink, watched the football game, had a good time, decided to walk, to walk home, and a couple gangsters drive up and rob him, do we attribute that back to that location? And it makes it incredibly difficult for us to say what we should and what we shouldn't do. And when we talk about ABC licenses like this, and these people are coming in and they, they want these things, it is so imperative, at least on my side, to be able to have a common platform for everybody all the time.
Right.
If it turns out that there's an LUC coming through, or CUP coming through you guys, generally it comes to my office as well. It'll go to Bill McGovern, everybody knows Bill. It goes to Bill, and then it will come to my office. And what he'll do is he'll say, hey, listen, I need you to look at this, are you aware of any issues? And so then I'll run the location, but I'll run the grid, and I'll run the location, and I'll see if there are any things that I feel like I can fairly attribute to the location. Like, if a bar, and I can think of one off the top of my head, if a bar that I know of was to change ownership, the next owner that came in, I would say, in our documentation, please, I need better lighting in the parking lots, I need you to make sure that there are security guards that work this parking lot during these times because I know there's problem A, B, and C that I continually can attribute to that. You would expect to see that from my office.
Right.
But if I don't see anything that I believe I can fairly attribute, then I will probably remain silent.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate you saying all that. I, I just, I've got to admit, in the time that I've served on the commission, I haven't seen any of the CUP reports that have had that sort of specificity. And maybe that's a good thing. Maybe that means, hey, you, you've looked at them and said, there isn't anything based on what you're describing, which makes absolute sense, but there wasn't anything that really rose to that level for you to say, hey, you know, please include that in the report.
The other thing is, years and years ago, we would come to you guys, and you would get various different conditions. Entity A, we would say needed condition A, B, and D. Another place that might be across the street would come before you guys, and we would recommend B, D, E, and F. And so there was no consistency. But when we redid all of the stuff for the new codes that we put in, we put in consistency into everything. I didn't get everything I wanted when that law came in, but I got a lot. And a lot of the things that are in there now, which are bare minimum, are the things that I used to have to fight for all the time. What else do we got?
Are there any other questions from the commission?
No, I appreciate, I mean, I don't really have questions, I just wanted to make a comment, but I appreciate you coming out because I was one of the ones that, one of the commissioners who had concerns, like how do, how, same thing as Phil, is how are these projects, or everyone that I was seeing, every ABC, how, there's, there's never one denial, or never one that we were, that we were seeing that there were any general police concerns about an ABC license. So I said, how, how is that possible? So I appreciate you coming in and explaining that. I think it's a little bit clearer for me on what your process is, what you do, how you go about it. So I guess if, if we would have a problematic location, then we will know about it because you actually would be providing that.
If you guys don't know about it, I didn't do my job.
Okay, very good.
That has to be on me.
I, I think that answers some of our concerns in the sense that, again, it's probably just the absence of it, which again, is not always a bad thing. It's good that there aren't those level of incidences. But I think we were all sharing that concern because two of my colleagues had known about this particular restaurant and felt that there, you know, was an incident that may or may not have been attributed to that site, and that became a concern. And so the thought was, well, if it's not in the report, someone must have missed it, what's going on, you know, the world's falling apart, sort of thing.
Right.
But I appreciate you coming down and explaining to us, you know, the, the levels of review that goes through. So I think, I at least can say for myself, it gives us a little more comfort knowing that something's not just going to slide by, or, you know, the subsequent meeting, oh, the item's back because, yeah, we forgot to tell you about ABC, D, and E. So again, thank you for that.
I hope that doesn't happen.
Mr. Mill?
Actually, he, he did remind me of that. This, just wondering how, because he said something that slipped through, is, again, this particular restaurant, not maybe, not this particular owner, but this particular restaurant was actually the restaurant where the guy had, sat and had all those pops, he drank 30 beers in the hour and got the car and killed the people, the little kids.
Overserved, crashed, and killed people.
Right. So I think that was one of our questions, how, how do we not, I mean, the only reason I think we knew about it up here is because, I mean, I live over there, so I remember it happening, and so would that not be something that would be brought to our attention? Is it because that's a prior owner, so we're not going to, and I don't think it's, we should hold the new guy responsible for the prior owner's bad, bad deeds.
Right. So this would be my thoughts on that. If owner X who had issues in the past, if owner X came before you guys again as part of our due diligence, we should put forward that you should know owner X had this problem, and this is what happened. I would not ever truly attribute conduct to a location, I would contribute, or attribute conduct to management and to the personnel.
I guess, and I need to step in here, because when you approve a CUP, you don't approve it for the owner, you approve it for the location, and it will run with the land for as long as that CUP remains active. So you probably have a heavier responsibility because a gentleman can have, or, or female business owner can have their license removed or revoked for misconduct or for whatever reason, but it will, the CUP will continue to run with that location. So we really have to be concerned about physical things that are happening in the area, lighting, parking, safety issues.
True. But their issue dealt with something that occurred off-site, and you can't, I, I can't and I, well, I won't in good conscience, hold activity that occurs off-site against the actual location.
No, and, and you can't.
Right.
Right. Because it doesn't even have anything to do with that particular location.
Commissioner Bauer?
Well, I think therein lies the tension that we have.
Sure.
Because we saw this location that had a certain reputation, and we were concerned, we have a new owner, now, they could present themselves as a new owner, but they could well be in cahoots with the prior owner. And so we, and we don't know that. All we know is this prior location had this bad reputation, and so we have to be careful in that situation. And in this last situation we're talking about, I think we all sort of smelled or thought perhaps it was a situation where this new owner was perhaps in cahoots with the prior owner. We don't know, but, you know, we also need to know that information that's attended with that location so that we can be, we can address that concern, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm trying to see how to get you where you want to be.
Because I understand what you're saying, you don't want to attribute a certain location to a prior owner. I mean, that's not fair to a new owner, but at the same time, we have to be sensitive to the fact that certain locations just have bad reputation, you know, and people like, that's the party restaurant, and, you know, the new place pops up, you know, it doesn't matter.
So let me see if I remember this right. You guys are a lot closer to this incident than I am. The, the request came in for a change of the ABC license.
Yes.
Right? The request didn't come in to alter the CUP because there could already be that there. We had already given a CUP and allowed for that conduct, is that correct?
It had expired in that, in that instant, it had expired because the, the...
It had lapsed?
It had lapsed.
I'll have to think about how we might be able to do a better job.
It's a one-off. I mean, I understand your dilemma, you don't want to do this for every location because that's a mountain of work that usually isn't necessary, but there's got to be some way to address the concern in this scenario that we're talking about.
I can take that to try to figure out something that might be able to help you make more informed decisions.
I mean, in this particular instance, it was an egregious, I mean, it was specific, and you could say it happened offsite, it happened in the crosswalk, you know, in front of the restaurant, as the guy who was drinking in that restaurant drove his car and ran over the family in the, in the crosswalk. So, I mean, yeah, it happened offsite, but, I mean, it's not like, he, there was a guy at the restaurant, and he was walking down the street, and some guys mugged him, and we can't, but there was a guy who got hammered at the restaurant and then killed little children.
It's directly attributable to the restaurant. And I, and I'm almost positive, if I remember right, we went back and, and that was, there were charges that were filed pertaining at the restaurant, and that's one of the reasons why that guy couldn't operate anymore. So let me try to figure out what else we might be able to do for one-offs like this that are slightly different, to give you guys a little more information. Dr. Bill, we'll try to figure something out.
Sean?
Mr. Chair, if I may offer some food for thought to the commission and maybe to our colleague from the Police Department. I have worked in several cities where, especially the city where Sunset Strip is located, and Santa Monica Boulevard with many nightclubs and bars, and in those cities, we work very closely with the law enforcement unit, and we discovered that those locations are always going to be attracting, because those are party locations, and they were important for the city's financial situation to continue attracting visitors for that particular purpose. And the, the challenge that the Planning Department there and the law enforcement had was how do we maintain order and, and, and safety at the same time? And we discovered in our analysis that it had a lot to do with the operator and the owner and the management of the process, and not so much the location. We came with a process that was aside from the land use process, and I'm not completely sure exactly whether or not we have a similar process here, that for certain uses such as nightclubs, bars, and very popular restaurants where alcohol is served in conjunction with food, we would ask a registration of the... food, we would ask a registration of the business manager, and with a, with a background check, and with the different types of information that we would give to the police department, and if they passed it, we would also verify that the manager is qualified to operate that, so that we would separate the CUP process from the actual operational issues that were always in the center of it. I think the police department could verify that the management of the establishment is really the, the place where it happens, and where they can get the best or the worst cooperation. That was the process we came up with. The following city I worked with, we established the same procedure, and it worked very well, when we wanted to create an arts and entertainment district where we knew we would get people who are under the influence walking around, and they might do funny things. We wanted the establishment to at least be responsible. Maybe we can look at a process like that with the police department and offer something to the planning commission in the future.
So, in response to that, we do have a process that does look very, very similar, similar to that. If we ever get around to going forward with the entertainment permits, the specific conduct that, at this bar that causes us problems, it's not so much that we sit there and have dinner, it's that we sit there and have dinner, and then we drink, and then there's some live entertainment, and then we drink more. And if we in fact, and a lot of our locations transitioned from eateries to bars to nightclubs, and when we decide that they transition, the entertainment permit processes, procedures, much like you have articulated, come into play. And for eighteen months, we argued amongst the city as to what that entertainment permit should look like, and we've had it. And if we simply move forward and use the entertainment permit, I think it will speak to many of the things that you're discussing.
Any other questions, or Commander Gominski?
Can you elaborate, you were saying that the entertainment permits per what was discussed a couple of years back with the revisions to the overall policy, none of, none of those entertainment permits have been issued yet?
There are several that have been issued, but not the volume that need to be issued.
In other words, there are folks that qualify to needing one per our, our law and our code, that just haven't obtained it yet?
Many.
Okay. I, because for a second I thought you said none had been issued, I thought, wow, that's a long time.
We have, we have a handful, and I think that if you were to go anywhere in this city on a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night, you'll see that we know how to party in this city. We have a lot of establishments that cater to that activity and are doing very, very well. They need to have entertainment permits, they need to be regulated.
Quick question, when's the 2015 information going to be available? Because this is 2014.
I would say we ought to be able to have it done by March 1st. Yeah, probably March 1st. Our computer guy will see how he sits. I tried to get response times out of him three weeks ago, and I'm still waiting, so I'll try to have that to you by March 1st.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, or anything you want to add?
If there are ever any questions or concerns, you guys have any needs of anything, please feel free to let me know, I'll come down and try to help in any way I can, anytime I can. What'd I do?
He, he was ordering another drink.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Thanks, Commander.
Thank you very much, you guys have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Okay. Thank you, Karen, for catching my order, out of order there. I'm so used to the consent calendar being right away, the jump to gun. First item of our business is a consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve items on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, with Commissioner Alderetti on the teleconference. Do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose that is on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I guess we'll move forward, okay. Next item is the Planning Commission Bylaws Amendment, and there's recommended action. Is there a presentation on this, further presentation?
We'll give you a brief presentation on this one. As you can see on page four of your guidelines, we only addressed one issue, but there was quite a bit of discussion about abstention, and perhaps we needed to clarify the council's policy, and we have revised your section so that you are consistent with council policy, which will then give you the, the ability and the right to abstain if you had a conflict that was not a conflict that was directly related to the state code. It does require you, however, to state the reason for your abstention, so that's the only change.
Okay. Now, it says we have an action, does that mean we're taking a vote on moving this forward, or what's our next step? Is there any further discussion by any commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Under the commissioner, commission officers, what happened to the HRC? I didn't see any, maybe I didn't, maybe I missed it, but-
The Historic Resources Commission?
The question is regarding the bylaws for the HRC.
No, regarding, regarding the bylaws for the planning commission with respect to, with respect to selecting a commissioner to represent, to be representative on the HRC.
That would be done in July as well.
But it would be, I think you asked if it's on the-
That is-
I didn't ask, I didn't see it in the bylaws.
Yeah, it's in the-
It's in the charter?
It's in the charter, yes.
Okay.
Yes, the requirement that, that the, a planning commissioner serve on the HRC, is that what your question is? Yes, that is in the charter, it's not part of our bylaws.
Okay. Why would that be, just out of curiosity, because you, you're, you're talking about the election of the, the vice chair and the, and the chair.
That's also, that is also in, in the charter, that's a charter issue.
It's in the charter.
Yes.
But it's also here in the bylaws.
Yes, we-
So I'm just wondering why-
We did, we put, it's in these bylaws to, to tell you how to do it, but it's the dead, the deadlines, the times of the election are specifically stated in the charter.
If you'd like to add a section here, that in July you would also appoint a commissioner to serve on the Historic Resources Commission, if you could certainly add a subsection here.
Let me-
For consistency, why not?
I, I don't understand, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with consistency, I would say why not do that?
Sure, that's-
Okay, great.
Now, is that something we can add at this time, since it'd be part of the-
Motion.
-motion?
We're going to make a motion with the, with the-
With that, okay.
Our suggestion would be that it would be added under number 11, Commissioner Officers and Representatives, and then D, section D, new section D.
Is it B, or would it be?
A new D?
Eleven D.
Eleven D.
Yeah, eleven D.
Eleven D?
Yeah.
Subsection D.
Yeah, that's fine.
Before we take a motion, is there any other questions or additions to add to what we just talked about?
You want to make a motion, Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bylaws with the amendment that we also update the Commissioner Officers, section 11, with 11D, to include the HRC commission, the commission's selection of the HRC representative.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries unanimously, Commissioner Alderetti is with us on the teleconference. This is a time and place for the public hearing, and items number two, conditional use permit number 2015-26, strategic plan number three point, three comma two, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson.
Let me, let me read this whole script, and then we'll-
Sure.
Hang on one second, so I do this correctly. If you wish to address the planning commission, please file a request to speak form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairman. The action of the planning commission is final, following consent of the city council, unless, if allowed by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the planning commission within ten days from the date of the commission's action, or unless set for public hearing by the city council. You're on, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Up for discussion before you is conditional use permit 2015-26 to allow for a major wireless facility at 4501 West MacArthur Boulevard. Verizon Wireless is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of a sixty-foot-high major wireless facility disguised as a eucalyptus tree at the site. The ancillary equipment is proposed to be located within a eight-foot-high CMU block, CMU block enclosure, and to help screen the facility, the applicant is proposing to plant two thirty-six-inch box eucalyptus trees, and to plant decorative vines and shrubs along the base of the enclosure. The site is located on the north side of MacArthur Boulevard to the east of the Santa Ana River, along the city's boundary with Costa Mesa and Fountain Valley. The property is in the M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, and is surrounded by industrial uses to the north, south, a bus terminal to the east, and commercial uses to the west across the Santa Ana River. Here's an aerial image of the site. The major wireless facility is proposed to be constructed to the north of the existing two-story public storage building. The building is approximately one hundred and thirty feet back from MacArthur Boulevard, with the major wireless facility being set back approximately two hundred and seventy feet. As you can see from the site plan, the enclosure and major wireless facility is going to be located to the north of the existing building, and is depicted there in the yellow rectangle, and the two trees that they're proposing to plant are going to be to the west of the facility to help screen it from Santa Ana River Trail users. In addition to the new trees, the applicant is also going to be relocating two trees that are where the existing facility, where the proposed facility is going to locate, also to the west of the facility to help with screening. Here's an elevation of the facility. Again, it's proposed to be disguised as a eucalyptus tree with the branches seven feet above the max height of the antennas, and the equipment enclosure being screened with landscaping and shrubs. Here's a photo simulation looking to the northwest from MacArthur Boulevard. You can see the proposed mono-eucalyptus there being screened by the existing two-story building, and blending in with the existing trees along the site, and also along the Santa Ana River Trail. Here's another photo sim looking to the northeast. Again, the proposed mono-eucalyptus is going to be screened and blend in with the existing eucalyptus trees on site and along the Santa Ana River Trail. And this photo sim is looking south from the Santa Ana River Trail with the proposed mono-eucalyptus there in the center, the proposed two trees there just to the west of it, and the existing trees along the trail and on site there. The project complies with all the major wireless facility standards of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. The facility is going to provide enhanced coverage to the southwest sector of the city, and the design is going to incorporate screening and landscaping to help screen it from public view. Based on analysis provided in the staff report, staff recommends the planning commission approve conditional use permit 2015-26 as conditioned. That concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Basara?
First of all, good presentation, I like the additional trees to try to kind of help camouflage it, I mean, these things are hard to camouflage as it is. One question, though, just from more of a procedural standpoint, so we've got those two trees being proposed that'll help mask it somewhat. I guess, do we have anything built in to where, let's just say these trees, you know, something happens, the wind blows them down or something, is there anything that obligates them to replace them, or, in other words, I would just hate to see the trees put in, they look great, and then all of a sudden, something happens? Because there's a lot of language here, if I read this correctly, about maintaining the actual facility, but is there, is there any way that we could word it, or is there something maybe already in here that would allow for us to ensure that we maintain the landscaping that you guys are proposing?
Sure. We don't have anything in the report itself, but all the landscaping provided for on the site is covered actually in the, in the zoning district standards that require the landscaping be maintained.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Do we have any written communication on this item? Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak, the applicant, or apps?
Good evening, my name is Mari Hager, I work for Core Communications on behalf of the client, Verizon Wireless, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have. I think staff did a really good job in basically setting up the project, and I do also just want to add that there will actually be a total of four trees. We are installing two new eucalyptus trees, but in plant, in installing the facility, we will be having to remove two thirty-foot-tall trees, and so we will be relocating those, and we will be relocating them so that we're in the planter that is along the Santa Ana path, so it'll actually provide for more screening along that area, which is probably the most exposed, and, which is, I think, a very positive thing, given from MacArthur, it's very heavily screened, it's over two hundred and fifty feet set back from the road, and it's, it's almost, and it's very stealth and very screened, so I think that the, the facility overall will be very much screened from the public. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Applicant? I guess we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, a motion, a vote. Commissioner Basara?
I, I appreciate how this came to us, I like the landscaping, I like what staff was, was able to work out with the applicant. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2015-26 as conditioned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Basara? We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, with Commissioner Alderetti via telephone. Okay. That ends the business calendar, we have a work-study session on synthetic turf design guidelines. You have thirty seconds, thank you.
Here we go. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tonight, we're here before you as a follow-up from a prior meeting, so we're going to be looking at the landscape guidelines as it relates to synthetic turf. So as a quick reminder, back in January, we, you were presented with water efficiency landscape ordinance and guidelines, and you recommended approval, and that moved on to council, they adopted that in February, but one of the items that you wanted us to bring back to you was some guidelines on the synthetic turf. So as a recap, there is new state law that was initiated in October of 2015 that reiterated that cities have to, that we cannot be unreasonable in our limitations of synthetic turf. It did not, provided we don't prohibit it, we can still create some guidelines, and so that's what we'll be discussing tonight. So as a, a little bit of focus, the area on the left is, of course, the private property, it's behind the sidewalk, and that's going to be the focus of our discussion tonight on the private property, as opposed to the parkway. So I'm going to walk you through right now our existing synthetic turf guidelines that were put together back in 2009.
Why don't you, I'm sorry, I didn't-
Well, our synthetic guidelines, well, as you might be aware, the- Well, our synthetic guidelines, well, as you might be aware, the public right-of-way and the parkway is under the auspices of the Public Works Agency. Take Higgins is here in case we want to talk about that anymore. But tonight's focus, for the most part, is on the private property. So we'll, as we go through the presentation, you'll see the, the slight difference.
What Melanie is stressing is that what's within the purview and the jurisdiction of the planning commission and the planning division is only private property, not the public right-of-way.
So once again, these are the existing synthetic turf guidelines that were put together in 2009. So the primary one is that the synthetic turf is limited to 50% of a front yard landscape area and that it reiterates to that it's not permitted in a parkway. And that's under the purview of Public Works, as we just mentioned. One of the second parts of the guidelines is that it goes over some best practices and including the blade length or the height, which needs to be a minimum of one and one-fourth inch. Talks about having a permeable weed barrier and a minimum three inches of crushed stone subbase to allow for percolation in a permeable surface. It talks about that the installation needs to be by a contractor with a valid license. And currently, we also require that a landscape plan be submitted for review by the city to assure that it meets the standards, but with no fee. And the guidelines also talk in terms of it needs to be maintained at all times. Another part of the conversation, just for context, and this isn't for a single-family residence, is that for the R1 zone, it requires some basic landscaping, and that is one 24-inch box canopy tree, six five-gallon shrubs, and 10 one-gallon shrubs. So you can imagine, this is more germane for a new home. So when we have a new single-family house, that's the minimum that they need to provide. And, but it's also something that is supposed to be maintained for existing single-family residences. So here's an example on Fairmont, and it's where you have a blend of 50% of synthetic turf. The remaining area has a tree, as you can see, mature tree at this point, has shrubs and, and ground cover. So that would be the image of what, what our standards, the goal is. Here's another example where there's probably less than 50% of synthetic turf and there's a mixture of, they've got one, two trees on their particular property and a mixture of permeable rock and landscape material. So in coming forward with you today, what we would like to propose for consideration and for dialogue is that we actually maintain our 50% maximum for the visuals that you just saw. And, but we do recommend that one of the technical items that be changed in that, that the turf blade length be a minimum of one and one-half versus one and one-fourth. And the reason for that is we're finding that that's, the taller blade helps durability and also to encourage a natural look. And we did a little comparing with some other cities and did a little research on that. One thing we are proposing moving forward is actually to no longer require a landscape plan for review. Couple reasons for that is that we were finding that a lot of folks actually weren't coming to the city. They didn't realize they needed a landscape plan review. And we, as a side note, we don't require a landscape plan when you do a full remodel of your front yard. So it just seemed to be that that seemed to be the way to go. But a, a strong component with that is to enhance our community education strategy to make sure folks understand what's required in the front yard and so that it's not just code enforcement to follow up, but that we get the word out and make sure everyone realizes what the standards are. So these are our recommendations for dialogue. And the next step would be to come back to the planning commission with a draft of the guidelines and you'd need to make a motion for resolution to move that forward. One other thing I wanted to quickly made mention is that this is the information that's on our website now, and obviously it's not, you can't read all of it, but it is the city's attempt to get the word out to folks as it is. It's called Santa Ana Lorna Garden. The links on the right, the blue hot links, one of them is ours, our design guidelines that describes how that landscape area needs to be, needs to play out, how much can be permeable, how much needs to be plant area. There's the existing handout for synthetic turf. There's a link to the Metropolitan Water District's turf removal rebate program, which folks can still apply for, but as you might know, they're out of money right now. And there's also a link for convenience for the public to the parkway landscape guidelines, which was authored by our Public Works Agency. So on that note, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You have any questions for Melanie? Commissioner Bauer?
Melanie, so you indicated that you recommend increase length from one and one-fourth or one and one-half.
One and one-fourth to one.
Why not two inches or a minute? It looks good. But now, obviously, our concern is that it looks like ash turf. That's nasty looking. So you want it to be natural, and so why not go with two inches wide or a quarter inch?
We, we could do additional research on that. From the cities that we did compare, they range from one and a half to one and three-quarters. So we could do additional research to see, you know, the science behind how much more beneficial it is to, to go higher. But we thought one and a half was a positive improvement from where we're at.
Yeah, maybe. One more question. And the link here, I don't know if you're aware of the legislation that Governor Brown just passed in terms of garden regulation, allowing city camp, garden, yard, yard.
Oh, you mean like vegetable gardens and such?
Yeah. He just signed this, I think it was last week.
I wasn't, I'm not aware of that particular one, but I, I don't know that we actually have anything on the books that prohibits that to begin with.
It doesn't sound like it, but I was wondering if there might be a link in this website to that.
Oh, just to get that information out.
Information out.
If it is the desire of the planning commission to add that to the, to the guidelines and what, before we bring it before you, we could do that. Victory garden or vegetable gardens or edible gardens in lieu of landscaping in the front yard, we could certainly add that language for your consideration.
I think if it's appropriate in this sort of setting, especially in that sort of Santa Ana Lorna Garden, that you provide that information so the neighbors know this is indeed.
We'll add that to the, to the draft that comes back to you.
If I might ask, Commissioner Bauer, what, what do you say about corn? Giant rows of corn in the front yard? Or do we want to limit? In other words, the reason I'm asking on that, not to, I like the idea, I don't want to patronize it, I'm just saying is that, do we, in addition to asking staff to come back with some language, maybe also want to ask them to come back with some, some sort of standards that maybe certain things probably shouldn't be grown in the front yard? I mean, I'll just say from my own personal preference, I would hate to have my neighbor having rows of corn. I mean, I'm in California, not Nebraska. Just saying.
I think what might reg-
I'm discriminating.
I guess I'm a landscape snob. My bad.
And I don't think you could honestly under the current legislation. The idea is that you are, there's a blanket that you're permitted to do so. The city couldn't enact regulations or guidelines that are prohibited. I don't think you could say, oh, like, hard checks.
We could look into that legislation a little closer from a landscape standpoint. The rule of thumb is that the landscape material is supposed to be no higher than a front yard fence would be. So that would be three feet.
That, that would prevent the large corn stalks.
Right. But we can double-check the legislation to see what allowances it made for. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Going back to what you said earlier, you don't need to submit a plan. So how do you, how do you control what is ultimately going to be done on the 50%?
It would be through code enforcement and-
That's after that.
Right. And that's why, that's why it's, it's a dialogue about the pros and cons of that. What we have found is that requiring a landscape plan, which we've done since 2009, we have a handful of folks that have submitted for landscape plans because they don't know that they need to or for whatever reason. And so I guess it's, and another example would be, there's a lot of folks that are redoing their whole front yard. And that may, their whole redos of the front yard may or may not meet our standards. It may be there's too many rocks in there, there's too much permeable and not enough greenery, doesn't meet our standards. But we don't require those to have landscape plans. So it seemed as though to treat them all the same was more appropriate. It's not ideal, but that's why we're recommending the education.
Why, why are we recommending, why are we recommending something with the outcome that says, oh, of course, we'll take care of it?
If I may, if I may answer this question. Actually, requiring landscape plans is cost prohibitive for many family households. It requires hiring a, a person to actually do the drawings and prepare them. And in, in our community, much like a lot of other communities, that would be cost prohibitive. We, we've found it to be more reasonable to actually do an educational campaign and make people aware of it and then allow people to switch as people are switching from lawn to these different types of landscaping through practice. And, and remember that our code enforcement will not cite them the first time, we will work with warnings. This will be just a slow process that will not bring in a costly undertaking to every household.
Well, it may not be costly as long as you're doing the education process upfront. If somebody's applying for, you know, changing this out and then you go through the education process and if, and if the people say, yes, we understand what you're saying, we understand the 50% role, to me, that's, that's okay. But, sorry, but I mean, to sit there and say, you don't need a plan and it's going to be code enforcement's responsibility down the line to make sure that whatever they did, you know, has to be undone. I mean, that's going to be more costly to the, to that individual if they have to go through the code enforcement process.
The difference is that when the code enforcement process goes, the code enforcement goes to the most egregious cases where something really needs to be undone, as opposed to requiring everyone to come up with a landscape plan and go through the permit process.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying necessarily that you need a landscape plan. I'm just saying you need a plan to give to these people with regards to their choice of doing this landscape and that plan is your education plan.
Commissioner McLaughlin, if I can answer that question, we've, we have discussed this among staff and we are looking at doing outreach programs, not only to city residents and property owners, but also to the contract, local contractors and landscape designers to inform them of our policy so that once this gets into place, we will be, we will be doing that as well as, as we have up on the screen right now, this, these links to what our landscape requirements are. So we do intend to put the word out and we do have a plan for that educational program. But as we, as, as our directors just stated, we do not, we do not collect a fee for those landscape plans and we cannot afford to do these landscape plans for free and it, it just would be cost prohibitive for us.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm not proposing that. What I'm saying is if, if the landscape plan is too costly to the, to the homeowner to do, then what are we doing from a city's point of view to make sure that, that, that homeowner, when they go to decide? I had, I had a neighbor down the street, 75 and 85 years old, and they wanted to replace their front lawn. They would have done 100% replacement of their front lawn. But they didn't do it because they, they found it was too cost, it was too costly for them to do the project in itself. But, you know, I can guarantee you, they're not on computers that are going to sit there and say, you know, oh, let me look up this link and everything else. It's not going to happen that way.
Well-
I'm just saying that if, if the, if the person, if the contractor has to come in and the contractor has to be given the training and the, and then the obligation is on the contractor to make sure that the homeowner understands what those requirements are and what, why, why they're doing, what they're doing. I mean, that, that to me solves the problem upfront. Making it someone else's problem down the line doesn't seem to be cost effective.
Well, we, we do intend to have an educational component for the contractors as well as for the neighborhood associations as well, you know, so it will be, we are going to try, we are going to put the word out and we do understand that this is a problem, but this is our solu, this is a solution that we've proposed at this point.
I'm, I'm sorry. Are you suggesting that making it a prerequisite for all contractors to actually learn our, our, our new process and our new guidelines prior to doing this as a way of replacing the landscape plan?
I'm not sure whether you want to do it prior to, but it would, I mean-
In conjunction with?
That would be done.
In terms of our procedures? I understand what you're, you're saying that, if I'm understanding you here correctly, you're saying that instead of just putting off the problem, the code enforcement later on at least puts all the requirement upfront so that-
Right.
-there's some level of clarity as to where people need to step forward. And, and we could do that. We could put guidelines both at our front counter and we could put those online and we could ask the contractors to check in with us and we can explain the guidelines to them.
Well, I think you said, I mean, if I understood this, one of your slides, I thought you said that, that the contractor that does this kind of job has to be licensed by the city.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And in some cases, people may not hire a contractor. That's really the case.
Probably not. I mean, some of them will probably get their gardener to come in and say, hey, do me a favor, whack out my front lawn and put this artificial turf in there and, and just go for it. And somebody's going to sit there and say, yeah, okay, no problem, we'll take care of it.
That's accurate.
I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, throw the process up in the front end and say, fix the, you know, make sure the fixes are in place and the controls are in place before they execute so that they don't get this costly situation that's going to be put on them with code enforcement.
That's well taken. That's a very, that's a prudent-
Sorry, I don't want to, I'm sorry to interrupt your job there.
That's a prudent recommendation and I think we can put, we can do a massive outreach to make sure the word is out.
Okay.
I think that, but, you know, when I was thinking of the outreach, it's almost like the watering days and stuff. Somehow, everyone figured that out. I, I guess. I don't know. It went to the water bill.
Most did.
Most, most people figured that one out. So I guess if you're doing a similar thing, then they'll see that-
Yeah, but your bill, in some cases, you say, you know, wow, you know, look at my bill.
It's never perfect. I mean, people do stuff without building permits every day, too. So.
I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I probably will be in the minority on this, but I, I have a real issue with telling folks what, what they can do with their private property. This, when someone's going to build some new construction in our city, I understand you give them, we, we can kind of set guidelines before they build, but I, I just kind of take issue with, with Big Brother going to tell people how they need to landscape their front yards. You know, again, I may be in the minority on this, but, you know, I live in San Ana, I don't live in Aragon. And I like, I like our city and, and I think common sense is going to win out, win the day here. But, you know, I just think that when we start telling people how they're going to landscape their yards, you know, then what next? We're going to tell them what color they can paint their houses? You know, I just think we're, we're traveling down a, a path that I, you know, just patently disagree with. And I'm going to just say that for the record now, that I, I don't agree with your, with your guidelines. I will not support them as they, as, as what you're saying here now because I, I don't think that, that the city should be telling people these sorts of things. Just, I patently disagree with it. So I just want to state that for the record now. And like I said, I may be in the minority, but, you know, I believe that personal property rights are very important and this is usurping the rights of, of people to do with their property as they see fit. So, well, that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir.
Help me understand, so these guidelines, the reason why they're before us is not because you guys had decided, let's go in there and regulate the front yards. This is coming down from the state, correct? Or at least some of this?
Well, the, the reason we bring it back before you is that the state actually, in their legislation, said, cities, make sure you're not prohibiting it.
Right.
And so we, we wanted to make, make sure that we were meeting state guidelines and we, so we're just kind of affirming our, our standards, our guidelines, if you will. So we're affirming the ones that are on the books right now.
From the state, right?
Yeah.
Or I'm sorry, our books here, but-
Our, our consistent with the state.
Excuse me if I, just point of clarification. The state isn't saying that only 50% of, the, the city's guidelines are saying 50%. The state's saying, you can't prevent people from having it. The city's saying, well, we're not going to prevent them, but we're only going to let them have 50%. So it's, these are city regulations.
No, no, I understand it, but it's, it's because of state. In other words, it's like AB 32 and then SB 350. Like, yeah, this, this idea of, here's this limit or something we want to achieve and then here's a companion piece of legislation that's going to get into the nuts and bolts minutia of it.
The state law- The state law is not initiating us to have this conversation in a way, we're just, it's a good opportunity because the state wants to make sure we're not prohibiting, and we're going on record saying we're not prohibiting it, this is our definition of what's reasonable.
The state requires us to have, they say if we're going to limit it, the limitation must be reasonable, and so we are coming to you now with the idea that this is a reasonable limitation.
I mean, you know, kind of like what Commissioner Mill's saying, as far as possibly being in the minority, I don't support synthetic turf, I, I think it's awful, I, it's kind of like a cell tower, you know, monopine, might as well be monoturf, I mean, to me, I don't think, when you showed some of those pictures up there, the brilliance of the green, I mean, it's pretty obvious you would stop and go, is that real? You know, I, I'm not a big fan of it, I, I like the idea of, you know, the succulents and all the other drought tolerant plantings, I think that allows for a more creative and better way to address some of the issues that our state faces today, so, I mean, you know, I, I don't like the, the standards at all, but if it's just simply an exercise in affirming some sort of compliance with state law, I can't see any reason to, I mean, if I could, if I could vote to not have the synthetic turf, then that'd be a different conversation, but since that's not the case, right, since it's not the case, then I, I think what you guys are presenting is fine.
If I may, the bottom line is that the, the state says you have to allow reasonable amounts of it, we have defined reasonable at 50%, which is more than my previous city where I worked with, which was 0%, and then, and a lot of other cities. So that is the 50%, if the commission disagrees with 50%, that could be discussed when we bring the item up, and we understand, we took note that at least one commissioner does not want us to put even 50% on it, that the property owners should have the right to put more, but so far as I understand it, we've had more restrictive landscaping requirements, this is less restrictive, this is one step less restrictive than it has been in the past.
And I think as, if I can comment here, it's, a guideline is just that, I mean, I kind of highly doubt there'd be someone with a tape measure going out there, but, but I think that, I think that the code enforcement is sort of complaint based, you know, sort of like our signage, and we were speaking about that at lunch the other day, and if a person completely covered their yard, front to, front to back with synthetic turf with no other landscaping, on the one hand, I agree with Commissioner Mill, I love living in Santa Ana without a bunch of rules, but I would be disappointed that that took place, and then I would also be disappointed if code enforcement came to some elderly couple or any couple that just spent $10,000 on what they believed to be a really nice landscape improvement, whether it was nice or not, in their eyes it was nice, and then say, hey, you got to chop out, you know, 50% of that or 20%. So I, so I think the outreach and education is going to say to give someone, hey, you know, it's about 50%, in reality, you're probably going to have 50% anyway, of green grass versus, versus planting areas, I think if you took a helicopter view of someone's yard. So it seemed reasonable, I, I, you know, I'm sympathetic to also not having a bunch of rules, so, so it's, it's like a double edged sword on this one, but that's, that's all I have to say.
So, can I just?
Yes.
Because you just brought something up. So what happens if somebody already has synthetic grass in, and they well exceed 50%?
Well, I can think of one right now that's going through code enforcement, so it's complaint based usually, and then code enforcement will research it and act appropriately.
So it's going, so it does go through code enforcement at this point in time, no matter, I mean, there's no, there's no date, back date that says if you put it in six years ago, you know, code enforcement can't, can't enforce it?
Well, this particular standard's been on the books since 2009, so I guess, you know, we could talk to legal, but in theory, if it was put in 2008 before we had any guideline, might be, there might be worth some discussion, but we've definitely had it on the books since 2009.
Okay, I mean, so that, therefore, they're liable to code enforcement?
Yes.
Is there any other questions or comments, or, so we don't have any action on this?
I just had a real quick-
Oh, sure.
But we're really only affirm, this program is actually going to help because it's going to reaffirm the standards we already have in place for landscaping, so-
Right.
And then this extra bit of guidelines for the synthetic turf will basically be the, the new part of our, our standards, so, but if we have this program, and we were out there, we're really reaffirming what we've already had on the books for a long time, so-
Right, and it's-
This outreach is actually a benefit.
It's a benefit because we're getting, we're, we're getting the word out afresh, and we're also going to be sharing the California friendly guidelines, which are newer, so there's, there's an opportunity to educate folks on if they're going to make that transition, be it synthetic turf or drought tolerant, how to do with some great resources, how to tap into rebates when they're available, so it's an opportunity for us to be, have more to communicate to the public.
We're offering more choices than we have in the past.
Okay, I, I think, I think it's, because I think that by, by doing that, I think people would abide by the standards, but in most cases nowadays, they just don't understand or don't know that they're even there, so I think this is going to be, you know, a good eye opener, and maybe it'll even encourage people that once they know this, what the standards are, to, to do more landscaping, you know, redo, or redo, I should say.
So we're looking forward to the challenge yet the opportunity of getting the word out, that, that education and the outreach.
Commissioner Mill?
For the record, I wasn't on the commission when they approved, but I did oppose them when they were initially put, I also opposed the fence guidelines that they've put, because the, again, you're, you're, I've been against them going back, there's been rules that come, came to the city, and I've been coming down to the city council meeting since the eighties, and I opposed them then, so for the record, I was opposed to them before they were on the books, I wasn't here on the dais, and now I'm reaffirming that I oppose them now.
Mr. Chair, so the direction, that, the only direction that we added to, to the discussion was provisions for edible gardens that could be added to the front yard, and I guess consistent with the drought tolerant standards, so we will, we will work that language in as we prepare the, the guidelines for commission consideration in the future.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
You just used the word edible gardens.
Corn.
What happens? Oh, not a heat, but a corn, no. What about wine? Vineyards?
They're edible.
I know they're edible, but-
They're, I come from a culture where you even eat the leaves.
You wouldn't eat them, that's fine, but-
And they'll probably have to be along the wall so that they're not over six feet, or not over four feet.
Not over four feet?
Remember, we talked about the four, well, we're going to do a little digging on that, but the four, the four foot is the height of vegetation allowed, other than trees and such, so.
That addresses the corn.
Yeah. When we come back to you, we'll outline that a little clear, outline it clear for everyone.
Commissioner Bauer?
And, and just for your clarification, it was actually the California Neighborhood Food Act, and it was passed back in September, actually, now, I became aware of it last week.
2015?
It was, it was assigned in September of last year.
Thank you.
September, oh, what?
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, thanks. We'll move on to excused absences, I guess no one's really absent, so we can skip that part. Planning manager updates.
We had, this afternoon, we had our first meeting of the design, an urban design and design review committee, and they, the committee members looked at a project on First Street, it is a multifamily housing project that is going after TTA, T-TAC funds, which are tax credit funds, and will be coming to you probably closer to April of this year, or March, someplace between March and April of this year. So that said, the other upcoming things that you can look forward to from staff are, we will be doing a work program, outlining a work program for you, of the planning divisions work program, and explaining what we're looking for doing in the next year or so, and bringing forward to you, and there's quite a bit, actually, our director is very ambitious.
Yes.
Is that your official comment for tonight? Any other, any other planning to-
No, that concludes the planning manager's comments.
All right. Commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Basira.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just looking at the agenda this week, I appreciate how staff addressed my comments from previous meetings as far as future agenda items, I mean, this is fantastic, I think it gives folks a chance just to, as I mentioned before, to see what's coming before us, so I think you guys did an excellent job on that, and with that, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Alderetti, you have anything to say?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner Verino?
I just, I wanted to just talk briefly about something that Commander Gominski brought up, he made a comment that we don't, we have only a handful of entertainment permits that have been issued, but that we have quite a few establishments in the city who are practicing without them, and how do we-
Yes, I actually spoke with the commander at the end of the meeting, after he was leaving, that we, we need to touch base to find out where that is, and if necessary, we will take action, from the planning and building agency, from the code enforcement end, yes. We might, it might be necessary for us to urge people to come and apply for their entertainment.
So maybe a task force or something that takes it, because I know that will generate revenue for the-
Well, also, it'll establish the new system that we want to-
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Mill?
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
Good. Mr. Bauer?
Yes, just real quickly, I, there's, a number of neighbors have come to me recently, live in West Florida Park, and a number of them have been very concerned about a, a property over an olive that's been, being built, and in their mind, they term it a McMansion, you know, it's, it's not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and I know that's very difficult to prohibit, that sort of thing, because sometimes that stuff is just in the eye of the beholder, but I know, I think we've talked about at least, when you came on board initially, Hassan, that there were some measures, particularly in the neighborhoods, if they want to preserve the character of the neighborhood, they can, there's some procedure that they could go about, and I'd like to take a look at that a little more closely perhaps, and I don't know if that's the purview of the planning commission, probably isn't, probably the historic resource commission, I would think.
That is something we actually intend to look into, as you know, in the single family neighborhoods in particular, we're not looking into upzoning anything, but we're looking at further fine tuning our design guidelines for compatibility. Number one, we're going to come up with a very extensive definition of compatibility in terms of design guidelines, and what we, what will constitute compatibility, both in terms of size and, and character, and architectural character, et cetera, but also, one of the areas that we'll be looking at in the residential areas is that if there is a conservation overlay zone that could be put to, for example, there are areas that the homes are predominantly single, single story, and people might want to maintain and preserve that character, that would be a way to address that, so that's a tool that we will be introducing after the general plan, after we identify those neighborhoods that may wish to preserve certain parts of their character, and what, how we would be able to address those beyond design review. So that is very much in the forefront of our, our discussions and our, what we're looking after. In the meantime, we are hiring a new senior urban designer to join the staff soon, I hope, and as we do that, we'll be revisiting the, the design guidelines, and compatibility is going to be very, very much part and partial of what we will be looking at.
I'm just curious, why is that, I know this is an ongoing problem, I know in Washington Square, they had this same issue, a number of neighbors came to me and that, and I know Commissioner Verino as well, so I know it's one of these hot button topics, I'm just wondering why that isn't a part, wouldn't be part of the general plan, you said it's going to be after the general-
It is part of the general plan, but the general plan sets the policies, the guy, the, the actual standards will, will be either along with the general plan or afterwards in the code-
Okay.
And in the, in the guidelines, so we have the general plan, and we have the zoning code, and we have the guidelines that we were creating at the same time, this cannot be, you know, the guideline, the general plan could say something like, every new development should be consistent and compatible with the existing neighborhood, that would be as far as the general plan goes, but how you establish that and how you determine that would be done through the zoning code and through the guidelines.
I mean, is, what's, I mean, what is the city doing now, for example, I mean, I know like in Washington Square, that someone put in, on an empty lot, put on a trailer.
There was an empty lot.
It was an empty lot, but I mean, it wasn't compatible in the minds of the neighbors, and I would agree, I mean, is, is there anything in place right now that would prohibit that?
We do have guidelines, and in fact, I'm just, right now, working with one of the case planners who's telling an applicant that their homes are too large and inconsistent and incompatible with the neighborhood, with the applicant who wants to build what they want to build, we do have some guidelines, and I must say that Santa Ana is pretty far ahead of, more than many other cities in terms of at least addressing compatibility and neighborhood consistency, and there are some things that you have adopted in the past, we just need to strengthen them further and give the tools to the decision making authority, which would be the staff, and then as an appeal body, the planning commission, to be able to enforce them. I think that's the part that we don't, we don't necessarily have the teeth we need in some of our documents, and we are going to develop those as we go forward.
Okay, great, fantastic, sounds like you're on top of it.
The only comment I had is I wanted to thank Karen for keeping me on the straight path with running the meetings, so, and we get our binders all the time, comes from you, so thank you very much for all that, so, that being said, we're adjourned.